Thanks for listening to Vermont Edition. I'm Andrea Lorian, one of the producers on the show. And what you're about to listen to has been edited for clarity and brevity. This is Vermont Edition. I'm Michaela Lefrak. It's almost time for Town Meeting Day, and Vermont Public wants to help you feel prepared and confident. Whether you're a new Vermonder or a seasoned local voter, town meeting can feel overwhelming. School and town reports are thick. There are endless variations on how things are done town to town. And what the heck is an Australian ballot? Fear not, because on our website, vermontpublic.org, we have a comprehensive guide to Town Meeting Day, including a definition of terms, questions you might want to ask at your town meeting, and even a Town Meeting Day bingo card. This hour, we're going to hear from officials in municipalities across the state whose residents are making big decisions this town meeting about school budgets, major infrastructure projects, new local taxes, and more. We also hope you'll join the conversation. What's a pressing issue in your town this Town Meeting Day? You could call in this hour at 800-639-2211, or send an email to vermontedition@vermontpublic.org. Our first stop today on our Town Meeting Day tour is in Burlington in Chittenden County. Catherine Shod is the Chief Administrative Officer for the city of Burlington. Catherine, welcome to the show.
Thanks for having me, Michaela.
So Vermont, or excuse me, Burlington is Vermont's largest municipality. How does Town Meeting Day work there?
Well, we are not fortunate enough to have one of the fabled town meetings where we get food, as I've heard so much about. We don't have a potluck. But we do have robust voting at eight local districts that we call wards.
So no pie for you tomorrow. I'm so sorry.
Unfortunately, no pie. But we do expect a very busy day. And in fact, we have already had almost 4,400 people have returned their ballots. But normally, we have up to about 10,000 people vote in our Town Meeting Day races when we don't have a mayor on the ballot. So we are expecting a lot more ballots to either be returned to us via our drop boxes and a lot of people to show up at the polls tomorrow.
So about 4,000 people have already voted. That's about 10% of the population?
We have about 29,000 registered voters. So it's about 15%.
So maybe one of the reasons why lots of folks are going to be weighing in is because the city is making some rather significant asks of residents this year. There are three different bonds on the ballot in Burlington. Let's start with the largest, which is being called the Lake Bond. It's a $152 million bond. What would this fund?
That's a great question. This one funds critical repairs to the wastewater and stormwater systems, which really protect public health and Lake Champlain. And specifically, it is going to replace some critical infrastructure at our main wastewater plant and fund some really critical safety upgrades. Unfortunately, our wastewater plant and infrastructure is terribly old. And so we're left with a rather large bill here, but for some extremely important work. And part of why we need to do this work is because of the housing shortage that we've all heard so much about, especially recently in the news. And as Burlington is looking to fund and figure out how and where we can build 5,000 new units, we are looking to needing to have to upgrade this wastewater system. And so this is an important key to being able to invest in those new units.
So this one is focused on the the main wastewater treatment plant. There's also another bond, the Water Bond, for $20 million. How would this differ from the Lake Bond? What would it cover?
And so whereas the Lake Bond provides repairs to the wastewater and stormwater systems, this Water Bond is for our drinking water and specifically to support that infrastructure. So that would provide for a new pump station at the reservoir and for a renewal at our main water plant. And this one is critically important because we provide water to the hospital. And as many of your listeners might know, UVM is the only Level 1 trauma center in the region. And so while we all need clean drinking water, I think we can agree that ensuring that the medical center has drinking water is also critically important. And this $20 million bond would ensure that as well.
I do know that many Burlington residents are concerned about the impact that these bond measures could have on their household budgets. According to the mayor's office, these two bonds put together could lead to a typical single-family household water bill increasing up to 89% overall between 2025 and 2030. That would occur gradually over a series of annual increases, not right away. How much support from the community do these two bond measures need in order to pass?
These two bond measures need 50% in order to pass. These two bonds would be paid back from everyone who receives a water bill. So not just property taxpayers, but every entity, including nonprofit organizations who don't pay property taxes, as well as some of our big organizations like UVM, as I mentioned, or Champlain College, who some of your listeners may have heard. They don't pay property taxes, per se. They pay other, something else called a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes. And so these rate payers are also contributing. As you mentioned, the up to 89% is an up to figure. Our team at the Water Resources Department is working very hard to see if there are continued ways to shave the costs of these bonds. People who are paying attention might remember that the Lake Bond, we started with estimates around $180 or even $200 million for that. And we've been able to get those down to $150 million. So we're continuing to be optimistic that we will receive grants and other state funding that might reduce the need. We're also working very hard on affordability programs so that the people in the community who would be hardest hit by these increases, our low-income residents, will be shielded as much as possible. And you can certainly find out more about that on the city's webpage.
We're speaking with Burlington's Chief Administrative Officer, Catherine Shod, about some of the big issues that voters in Burlington will be weighing in on this Town Meeting Day. Ahead of today's show, we asked listeners to write in with their thoughts ahead of Town Meeting Day. And a listener named Kelly had one word that they repeated three times: housing, housing, housing. As you mentioned, Catherine, the affordable housing shortage in Burlington and across the state, it has its tentacles in every single issue that voters might be weighing in on this Town Meeting Day, including one that's on the ballot in Burlington. The city council is seeking more power when it comes to how much notice a landlord needs to give before ending a tenant's lease or raising rent. This would be a charter change for the city of Burlington, right? What are the details here?
That's exactly right, Michaela. This charter change would give the city council more flexibility around the rental notification timelines. Right now, Burlington has a very detailed charter. And when any one piece of that charter needs to change, the process is that we need to go to the voters and get their opinion on it, get them to approve it. And then it needs to go to the State House. And we need to get them to sign off on it. And we also need to get the governor to sign off on it. And so this charter change would put more of that power back into local hands. And as conditions change here on the ground in Burlington, that would allow the city council to more flexibly be able to change that rental notification period. And we feel that that's something that should not be bound up in such a long process, needing to go to voters and then all the way to the State House and the governor for that kind of change, something that doesn't need to happen in other communities.
Well, there are also two contested races for Burlington City Council. And if the progressive candidates win, it could be a big moment for the city because it would mark the first time in the city's history that the Progressive Party would hold both the council and the mayor's office. Burlington is also unique in that it's one of three municipalities in Vermont where non-US citizens, legal residents of the US, but non-citizens, can vote in local elections. Catherine, what types of get out the vote efforts has the city done in this past year, particularly to new Americans, to encourage participation?
That's a great question. We have been working closely with some of the city's partner organizations, including the Association of Applicants Living in Vermont. We, as the city, have a program called the Trusted Community Voices that was established during the COVID pandemic, where we have part-time employees working for the city from different New American communities within the Burlington community. And we try and leverage those personal relationships to get the word out. We have certainly heard from people that, as exciting as this opportunity can be, people can be afraid of casting their vote. And so we have certainly found that kind of the personal touch and being able to answer specific questions kind of in a one-on-one format has worked really well. We've done some door-knocking campaigns. So as much as we've gotten the word out on Front Porch Forum, and we've been grateful to the mayor's office for putting things out in her newsletter and Instagram, we're also trying to really have people talk to their friends and neighbors. And so if you're hearing this and you know someone who might be affected, please encourage them. It's not too late. If you are a non-citizen voter or an all-legal resident voter, as we like to say, you are still eligible to register at your polling place tomorrow. And because this is an all-local race content for tomorrow's ballot, you can vote on everything.
Catherine Shod is Burlington's Chief Administrative Officer. Catherine, thank you so much for joining us today ahead of the big Town Meeting Day tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Michaela.
Now, we're heading to northwestern Vermont, where residents of Franklin, Swanton, and Highgate will vote on the Mississauga Valley School District's budget. We're joined by Rennick Darnell Martin, the vice chair of the Mississauga Valley School District. He lives in Highgate in Franklin County. Rennick, welcome to the show.
Good morning. How are you?
Doing well. Thanks for being with us. Let's travel back in time for a moment to last Town Meeting Day, when nearly a third of school budgets across the state failed. Tell us what happened with the Mississauga Valley School District's budget.
So our school budget took three times in order to pass. I think last year was just, you know, the same issue that was going on across the state. I think voters were reacting to, you know, property taxes going up and some messages coming out of the governor's office. And, you know, they voiced, they used their voices. And we're glad that it was heard in Montpelier. But as far as our budget was concerned, it took a couple of tries to get it through.
Yeah. Were you surprised that it took three votes to pass?
We weren't surprised. I think the difficulty that we have in our district is that, you know, we get enveloped in a lot of the rising of costs that are happening around the state, even though our budget is proportionally quite low and our spending is quite low. I think we're near the bottom in spending in terms of what's happening around the state. I think it's like 98 out of 122 schools and supervisory unions.
So with that context, you still had to try to bring down costs. And I'm sure that what happened last year is still very much on the mind of you and your other school board members and residents of the school district this year. What were some of the ways that you and the board worked together to bring down costs? Did you have to get creative?
Yeah, so I mean, we're very fortunate in our district. I mean, we have a great business administrator and superintendent and just a team that really worked on trying to find ways to have a fiscally responsible budget that was kind of going to maintain a level service across what we were able to offer students. So, you know, we made some cuts. We made some cuts to our central office staff. We made some clever cuts to, you know, reducing supplies and software that we may need and, you know, taking away some unfilled positions. And we were able to reduce the tax impact on voters. So that's going to be like really important for especially voters in our area to understand that, you know, we did everything we could to keep taxes going down and to, you know, hopefully provide what they need for student outcomes.
And of course, there are some costs that are out of a school board's control, such as the rising cost of health insurance. How did that affect the school budget there?
Well, that's difficult. I mean, we had an 11% increase in health insurance premiums. And there's really not much we can do about that. We also have to keep in mind, like, you know, just inflationary pressures and adjustments to, you know, cost of living and special education. So those are the things that kind of make the overall percentage increase. But, you know, the big thing for us is the fact that, you know, when you combine like the long-term weighted ATM and the fact that we have more students in poverty than some other districts, it actually turns out that the calculation reduces the tax rate on our district. So I think on average, last year, there was statewide about a 14% increase statewide. And we had about an 8% last year. And then I know this year, they're looking at about a, potentially about a 6% increase. But MVSD is actually going to have a negative 7% decrease in their property tax bills.
Wow, that's significant.
It is, it is. And like I said, we, you know, we're, our goal was to maintain level servicing to our students because, you know, still prioritizing student outcomes is the number one goal. You know, we were able to make some cuts where we needed. And again, just the way that things are currently weighted, it does help us in terms of not increasing it. We'll see if that stays the same way, depending on what the legislature decides to do in the, in this session. But currently, I think we're in a strong position to, you know, offer voters, you know, again, some cost savings, but while still, you know, striving towards student outcomes.
You said the word weighted. I wonder if you could explain that a little bit for listeners who are less familiar with how this works. Is the Mississauga Valley School District has a higher portion of students compared to other districts in the state who are weighted due to the income status of their families, right? How does that, how does that work exactly?
So the percentage of students sort of quote unquote, per the matrix of the state, living in poverty, right? Like, it just changes the way that a student is weighted in terms of making that calculation for, you know, a cost savings. And then you also have, we have an increase in how many students have special needs. So what that does is it sort of allows us to be able to find savings, where some other districts may not be able to do that. There's other things that do affect the calculations, such as there's a lower yield right now just because all the budgets are slightly going down. And then there's other things, too, that, you know, you can factor in additional revenue that a school can bring in to help like offset some of the costs.
So you're the vice chair of the Mississauga Valley School District, but you know, you're also just a regular citizen who will be part of Town Meeting Day. Oh, what are the other, what are the other concerns on your minds this Town Meeting Day outside of your role on the, with the schools?
I think the same thing that's on everybody's mind, which is, you know, what are the changes? And how is that going to affect us? One of the things that I hear from our voters, which is particularly important, is, you know, what's going to happen to local control with some of the things that are proposed? I agree, like all voters, you know, across the state, we need to find a better way to overall fund education and to keep, you know, to keep a cap or mitigation on costs. But I hear that being able to properly be a part of the conversation of what's happening locally is still very important to voters.
And I think you're referring here to Governor Phil Scott administration's education plan to reduce the number of school districts down to five, yes?
Yeah, and, you know, I'm supportive of change, right? Like, how we fund education in Vermont, like, it does need some reform. But the biggest thing is, is how do you maintain that, you know, that local control to be able to, again, you can broaden it, right? Like, so right now, we have three towns, Franklin, Highgate, and Swanton. But I think the issues and, you know, what voters are going to want up in this area might be different than what somebody might want, like in Chittenden County. So how they form the districts, you know, how they decide what school board members, you know, can affect, I think it's really important and it's a really big part of the conversation. And then just remembering that the needs of educating students is difficult and it's challenging right now.
And lastly, do you have any favorite Town Meeting Day traditions? Any food that you get to eat?
I don't know if I have a favorite food. I like to just, you know, get out, vote. I like to, you know, see the people in me, especially being on the ballot. I'm actually on the ballot this year. No, I just, I think I just like being in the community and, you know, that there's something different about Town Meeting Day versus, you know, the bigger elections in November, right? It's very personal. And so I'll be up early. I'll make sure I have a couple of cups of coffee and fingers crossed that, you know, our budget gets through and people know that we did all we could to keep taxes from going down.
Rennick Darnell Martin is the vice chair of the Mississauga Valley School District. He lives in Highgate. Thanks so much for joining us.
Absolutely. Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Well, our around-the-state Town Meeting Day tour continues in Plainfield in Washington County. We're joined now by Carl Bisex, Plainfield's Select Board Chair. He's running for reelection this year as well. Carl, welcome.
Yes, hello.
Well, thanks so much for joining us. And I want to start this conversation by acknowledging that, you know, like many communities in Vermont, Plainfield had a tough year, a tough 12 months. There was the closure of Goddard College, which many people in town had a connection to. And then last summer's flooding hit Plainfield really hard. How are folks doing there?
Folks are surviving. I think the shock of a second flood in one, in two years really got people to realize that this is going to be a real event we have to prepare for. We're fortunate to have emergency management staff looking at this. But people are, I think, maybe a little bit in shock. But it's sad to see the heart of our community go away. Because many of the houses that were along the Great Brook, especially in the Lower Village, were damaged beyond repair. So we're, that's been a real shock. And it's affected everyone in town, I think.
Yeah, well, you previously served on the Select Board and then stepped back last spring. No one could have predicted last summer's floods. In your position, how did you handle that? Like, what was your role? What helped you through?
I, along with many others, jumped in to help in the immediate aftermath of the flood, helping organize, moving equipment around, getting volunteers who wanted to muck out basements to do that. And I was giving tours to FEMA personnel and other folks who wanted to see the damage on our Great Brook Road. The, so I was quite busy for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I can only imagine. And yes, now you're running for reelection this year. And there's also a number of items on the docket for Plainfield on Town Meeting Day. But I want to focus for a little bit on Article 13, which would create a village expansion reserve fund. For those who are unfamiliar, could you explain what exactly that is? What would it do?
Well, the Reserve Fund is a fund that the town creates to be able to use for one particular purpose. It carries on year to year, and it's not to be used for anything other than what it's stated to be used for. So in this case, the expansion project is an initiative taken on by volunteers in town who have been working very hard on this. And we want to make sure that there's a fund available for grant money or donations or borrowed money to be able to be used and protected from, you know, just be used for that particular project. It's also a measure of how the town feels about creating this, this community within a community. It's really expanding our village. And the idea is to try to preserve the feeling we had of a very tight-knit community.
Has Plainfield ever done anything like this before?
Well, I don't have direct memory of anything like this. There have been private initiatives of Martin Meadow and New Hamburger and some other, I don't know if I'll call them developments, but other communities that were formed to, to make it seem like a community.
Speaking of those feelings of community, I think Town Meeting Day for many communities is one of those binding agents where people come together. They resuscitate traditions that they haven't participated in for a year. They see each other's faces. They, you know, talk out tough issues. What sort of traditions are there at the Plainfield Town Meeting Day?
Well, it's actually one of my favorite town events personally. I think it is great to see everybody. We have, for a number of years now, had a reading of poetry in the beginning of the meeting, which usually written by Charlie Barish, who was our former moderator. And we hope we can continue that along. We have, the fire department always makes some fabulous chili to help feed people. And there's pies, where you can buy a slice or a whole pie. So these are, these are kind of food traditions. But other than that, it's, you're pretty much go through the warnings and people discuss the particular ones they're interested in. And we get to get a reading on where the town's at on certain things.
All right, Carl, I was getting a little concerned that it's been almost two-thirds of the hour and we hadn't talked about pie yet. So I'm very appreciative that you brought it up.
And they're very good.
I bet they are. Carl Bisex is the chair- I bet they are. Carl Bisex is the chair of the Plainfield Select Board. Thank you so much for joining us today and I hope, I hope you have a good town meeting day.
Sure. Good luck with the rest of the show.
Thanks. Next up, we are heading south to Wyndham County and the town of Rockingham. It and the villages of Bellas Falls and Saxon River just voted this past weekend on a plan to create a single municipal fire and rescue department. We're joined now by Rockingham's manager, Scott Pickup. Hi, Scott.
Hey, Michaela, how are you?
Doing well. All right. So your meeting was on Saturday. Has it always been thus?
Well, last year, we had a special town meeting to discuss changing town meeting. We actually moved it this year to a Saturday. And I'm not sure if it was because we had some very interesting issues or because people were more available, but we had a really nice turnout. So I think everybody was pleased with the Saturday event.
So as I mentioned, one of the big issues you were voting on was this consolidation of three separate fire departments into one. What, what was the argument for doing this?
Well, we've been engaged in a process with the community, Michaela, for the last two and a half years to look at, we have three independent fire departments covering, we have two villages and obviously the town. We've got a host of variety of different types of firefighting, right? We have I-91, so that's, you know, rescue and traditional sort of highway issues. We've got rural issues where we fight grass fires and out in rural areas. Then we have Bellas Falls, which is more tightly compact, more traditional type of firefighting. So all three departments have wonderful members, great traditions, but we had a lot of duplication. It was, it was really an effort by our citizens to take a look and say, can we do this better? Can we find a way to continue to preserve, you know, the fire service that we all really love and respect and find a way to make it work in today's environment? We're really suffering with, you know, the loss of volunteerism over time and looking at the commitment that it takes for somebody to be an effective firefighter. So that's really the genesis of how we got to their town meeting.
So, so this vote to consolidate the three departments was successful, but I, I have some spies down there, Scott. And I know that it was a rather contentious issue. A lot of people felt, you know, very strongly in, in support of keeping things the way they were. What, what were some of the arguments for, for keeping these departments separate that you heard?
I think, Michaela, there, there's tremendous pride in the organizations and the history. So I understand, really understand why, why the change and to go to a new structure was very difficult. We were really making some arguments based on, we know that we're at a inflection point with trying to recruit and maintain members. Like most of Vermont, a lot of our members are, are seasoned and we really want to attract and retain younger folks. And the, and the reality of replacement of equipment, the duplication of things like hoses and air packs, when you looked at the, the financial impacts, it just made sense to try to do this and see if we could do a reset on this particular service.
You also voted on a major infrastructure project involving the Bellas Falls train station. Could you tell us about that?
So our train station, like most of our sort of public facilities in Bellas Falls is historic and it's part of the National Historic District, but it needs some attention. It's been sort of a neglected asset. Green Mountain Railroad owns the station. We are in the process of negotiating a purchase agreement. Since D-Trans in the state of Vermont owned the land, we also have to come up with a lease. And unfortunately, we're in a post-industrial area of town. There is some legacy pollution involved in this, in this transaction.
It's a brownfield site, right?
Correct. A lot of folks were concerned about the cost of the brownfields and just trying to make sure that everybody in the community understood what we were trying to accomplish by purchasing and renovating and making this station, you know, something that we would be proud of as part of our community.
I'm curious, Scott, does, does the uncertainty at the federal level with all the, the changes going on at federal agencies and cuts to federal grant funding, does that impact projects, like local infrastructure projects like this one involving the train station?
Well, we do have a lot of brownfields money. We also have money from the Northern Borders Regional Commission. We have money from the, you know, the state of Vermont and our downtown transportation fund grant program. All of those are variously impacted by our federal partners. So we're all concerned at every level of government. And, you know, when we're looking at cutbacks and reductions, it seems sometimes that maybe, you know, people don't take a look at things that we're doing well and just want to go in and try to reduce and potentially impact some of these programs, which are really beneficial to us at the local level.
Scott, I'm, I would love to hear some of your favorite town meeting day traditions. Even though the, you know, the town has, has shifted to the Saturday vote, things were a little different this year than they have in the past. Are there any longstanding traditions that have, have been going on for years that you really value there?
Things I appreciate is our moderators always start the meeting and this year with Denny Hardy by saying, you know, we arrive at this meeting as neighbors and friends and we will depart as such. So it really speaks to, I think, the, the heritage of town meeting to say, you know, we can disagree, we can have opinions, we can try to persuade each other, we can have, you know, moments of, of conflict. But at the end of the day, we are neighbors, we are friends. We can do these things and be able to continue to keep those relationships. I'm actually very proud of people, the way they conduct themselves. They had differences of opinions and some of them were quite sharp, as you've mentioned. But I think in the, at the end of the day, people's better nature took over. It's really a strong and I think a positive impression on just how things can get done at the local level. And quite frankly, it was, it was a prideful day, I think, for the folks that showed up and participated in that particular town meeting.
Well, may all political debates in 2025 be thus. Rockingham Town Manager Scott Pickup, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
You too. Well, our last stop on our little town meeting day preview tour is the town of Bennington in, of course, Bennington County. Our guest is Jackie Matts, the Chair of the Town Charter Review Committee. She's also running for the Bennington Select Board. Jackie, welcome.
Hi, Michaela. Thanks for having me today.
Yeah, we're so glad to have you with us. So Bennington is considering a couple changes to its charter. One is to allow people under 18 to vote. Can you tell us about this?
Yeah. So we had a great group of people looking at the charter this year. And two of the recommendations we put forward were to expand voting rights, one for non-citizen residents and one for 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in local elections. There's some similar examples across the state and across the country. But we were really excited to look at, at expanding the voting rights to these new populations.
So where did the impetus for this change come from? Like, were there folks in town who were watching what Brattleboro was doing? They're the only other town in Vermont that allows 16 and 17-year-olds to vote? Or did this come from local teenagers?
It didn't come from local teenagers, but it did come from all of the recommendations that the Charter Review Committee looked at this year did come from members of the public through the select board meetings and some other groups in town. So we really, this year, we prioritized public input for a lot of these issues.
And have teens been involved in any way in this process since it would affect them and their, their voting rights?
They, we got public input from them. We collected a lot of ideas from the community as we were looking at this. And one thing that we found was that there's a lot of younger folks, 16 and 17-year-olds, that are really involved and active in the community. They volunteer with us, they work jobs, they're active in the school communities. And so this seemed like another way that we could sort of pull them in and hear their input on how decisions are made in this town.
The other charter changes you mentioned would allow non-US citizens, legal residents, to vote in local elections. Currently, Montpelier and Burlington and Winuski are the only three Vermont municipalities that do this. Is the reason that this is on the ballot the same as, as what you were saying before with allowing 16 and 17-year-olds to vote that kind of arose from, from this committee and community input?
Yeah, absolutely. It came out of the community. Bennington has received a number of refugees as a refugee resettlement site. So we have a, a number of families that have moved to town recently that are not US citizens, but they are legal residents of the town. They're, they're here legally. And so we, when we look at this, we find that they have a, a strong stake in the community and incentive to participate in, in our local affairs. They live and work here, they pay taxes here, they follow the same ordinances that the rest of the people in town follow. And so it seems that they should have the ability to make some informed choices about who leads them.
I, I know that the other cities that allow non-US residents to vote have been the subject of lawsuits by both residents and larger groups outside of Vermont. Those lawsuits have all been dismissed. But I, I'm curious if that has been a, a topic of consideration, this, this potential for some sort of legal ramifications against Bennington?
We, we did look closely at some of the legal challenges that have come up in other districts. There's been, I think, five lawsuits challenging this expansion of voting rights, mostly brought by the same group of individuals. And at the time that our committee was meeting and deliberating, one of them was still ongoing. So we, of course, wanted to understand first if the change we were proposing was legal, but also if it would make Bennington a target for a similar lawsuit that, that could be costly to defend. We met with our town legal counsel, who pointed out that most of the past suits had been dismissed without the need to present any evidence. And so that was a clear indication to us that courts saw this issue is clearly within the rights of our town and they weren't seriously entertaining any of the challenges that had been raised. Since our committee's wrapped up its work, that last lawsuit, like you mentioned, has also been dismissed. So I think we made the right call there.
So Bennington's town meeting is sort of split between two days, if I'm remembering correctly. There's some stuff going on tonight and then there is a vote tomorrow. Can you tell us how that works?
Yeah. So we'll have town meeting tonight at 7:00 PM at a local firehouse. Town moderator will open that up. And that's always a great opportunity for folks to get some last minute questions answered about items that are on the ballot. And then we'll break and come back and have town voting day tomorrow from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM by Australian ballot.
Could you remind us, for folks who don't remember, I always get these confused, what exactly is Australian ballot? How is it different from other ways of voting?
So Australian ballot, I think, is the, the one that people are more familiar with. That's where you get a sheet and you go to a private booth and fill out your responses and then put it in the voting machine. So it's the, the sort of private ballot where nobody knows how you voted on each of the items.
I always love that, that once a year, we get to say Australian ballot like seven or eight times on this show and then we never say it again, that it comes right back up. Jackie, I know that there's a number of positions up for election at town meeting day in Bennington. There's select board seats, moderator treasurer, school board seats. I, I know that there, towns across the region have, have struggled in recent years with getting people to run for these local positions. Has that been a challenge in Bennington?
It's certainly been a challenging aspect to navigate in past years. This year has turned out a little different for the select board race. There are three seats up for reelection. One incumbent is running again, but we have 10 candidates on the ballot for those three seats this year. So there's been a lot of interest from the community.
And I should note again that you, you are running for the select board. Jackie, do you have favorite parts of the Bennington Town Meeting Day traditions? Either what happens on Monday night or the voting day on, on Tuesday? What do you love about town meeting day?
You know, I love actually that, that we get to come together on Monday night and, and have a respectful dialogue about a lot of the issues. There is a lot on our ballot this year with six charter provisions, obviously all of the, the candidate races and then a number of budget issues. So we have a long ballot this year. But I think it's great that folks have a chance to come out and talk about those issues, go home, digest a little bit, and then come back the next day.
And would you be able to, to briefly sum up those budget issues for us? I mean, the issues around different maintenance and property taxes and school budgets are, are top of mind for so many Vermonters. How, how does that look in Bennington this year?
We had our town staff work really hard and do a great job to keep the, the, the budget within, I think about 5% of where it was in the past. And so they've really worked to control those increases. There's some things that have been challenging to navigate, I think particularly some healthcare costs for town staff. But I think one thing that a lot of folks don't always understand is that a number of the additional budget requests that go on the ballot would add to the main budget. So they're not already baked in. So a lot of the funding requests from local agencies that do a lot of great work to support our community are in addition to that budget.
Jackie Matts is the Chair of Bennington's Charter Review Committee, as well as a candidate for the Bennington Select Board. Jackie, I hope everything goes smoothly this evening and Tuesday. And thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks, Michaela.